Okay, let's call this meeting to order. The Algonah Regular City Council, September fifteenth, uh, nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, do we have roll call?
Brad.
No, first, wait a minute. I guess we should do pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Put my glasses on so you can see what I'm doing. Uh, roll call, please.
Brad.
Here.
Rodney.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Don.
Here.
Jody.
Here.
Harley.
Here. And we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Shall move.
Oh, second. Motion is second. Um, roll call?
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes. Okay, then, um, across the mayor's desk, the first thing, uh, I'm Mayor Protem sitting in for Mayor Murphy, uh, our condolences to him on the death of his mother, and, uh, he's, uh, doing that today, so, uh, we're filling in for that meeting for now. And a couple of other things I see here, uh, we have, uh, openings for patrol officer and a dispatcher, so if anybody's out there interested in those positions, uh, you can check on the city's website for, uh, the information on those. Uh, with anything else? Okay, then, um, update from the city administrator?
Um, in addition to those upcoming job openings, we also have right now posted, we're still hiring for EMTs and paramedics on the EMS side, as well as, uh, still accepting applications for the, uh, children's librarian position. Um, and then just want to remind folks with, um, October first coming up here will be Band-Aid and, uh, annual tornado alley. So it'll be Saturday, October first, so you can, uh, sign up here at City Hall or online. Uh, if you go to the city website or social media pages, you can find the links there. Um, or you can also, uh, register the same day, um, as the race between six forty-five and eight fifteen that morning. Uh, so it's the one-mile fun run, the five K and the ten K for the fortieth anniversary tornado alley race. Uh, and then we've obviously had a lot of construction projects continue to go on, and we're starting to see some of the dominoes fall. Um, on McCoy Street, the, uh, south portion has been open for, um, a few weeks now. Uh, but that north section, um, north two blocks, uh, was, uh, the main driving portion of that was paved last week, and then the contractors have about two more weeks of concrete work doing, um, intersection sidewalks, tie-ins, things like that. Um, so it should hopefully be getting that street open here in October. And then, uh, Philip Street, uh, underground utility work continues on, um, all five blocks of that, um, and then expect that to start getting paved, starting from the north here, um, beginning in October. And then the, uh, Call Street parking lot here, uh, downtown, um, we appreciate everyone working with us and, uh, the logistics on that, but that project, uh, continues on, on track, and they've got all the stormwater infrastructure underground there, um, complete, and so that will, uh, hopefully be finishing up here by the end of the month of October. On the mill and overlay and street improvement, uh, side of things, uh, the contractors have been really busy here on the west part of town. Um, Nebraska Street and William Street are now completed and open. Um, Call Street, I think, got, uh, asphalt paved today, and then, uh, the two blocks on, uh, next to the courthouse, uh, Hall Street and State Street, uh, those are going to be worked on this week, and then hopefully, uh, paved either Friday or Monday or early of next week. Um, so hopefully we'll be, uh, out of, out of here, uh, this area, uh, real soon, and then moving on, uh, to the final section of town, which is in the, uh, Nebraska Jones Street area. Uh, so residents can go to our city website, uh, Facebook page, um, or call here at City Hall if they have any questions on updates and, and kind of timeline for the remaining projects.
Okay, thank you. And I should ask the council, anybody have anything that's not on the agenda that want to bring up? Okay. Then we'll, uh, move on to citizens' opportunity. Anything not on the agenda? Let's see, anybody here? Okay, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. That's, uh, approved minutes of the September sixth court session, approved minutes of the September sixth regular council meeting, approved appropriating resolution number two, twenty-two, twenty-three, oh, eight, approved department records, approved minutes of various boards and commissions, and approve the administrative's report.
Shall move.
I'll second.
Motion second. Roll call.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes. Move on to number nine, an ordinance amending city code, uh, chapter thirteen twelve, article two sanitary sewer charges, second reading.
Uh, this is the second reading of an ordinance that would make, um, adjustments over the next three years to the city sanitary sewer rates. Um, this is in response to, um, anticipated improvements that, uh, will be, uh, expect to start construction here in twenty twenty-four and complete in twenty twenty-five. Uh, right now, working on finalizing, uh, preliminary design, uh, but with those, uh, improvements, we're looking at about a fifteen million dollar construction project there at the plant, um, to make upgrades, uh, to some of our existing infrastructure down there that we've, uh, deferred to loop into this, uh, larger project, um, and then adding a, uh, new treatment, uh, technologies to comply with our latest NPDES permit, uh, requirement. So, uh, based on the, uh, where we're at on our annual revenues and what we're going to be looking at, construction costs and the cost of service to that debt, um, we designed this ordinance, um, setting out rates through July first, twenty twenty-five, uh, so people know, um, what to plan for and where we're expected to be, um, but obviously, as we proceed through design, get more firmed-up numbers, um, we can revisit this and, and adjust accordingly, so we, uh, can, uh, fine-tune those numbers. Uh, it, uh, uh, we'll make a, uh, adjustments to the service fee and the usage rate here, uh, yet this fall, and then the other rate, uh, adjustments for the service fee, um, usage fee and the infrastructure fee, uh, will automatically increase as set forth on July one of each year.
Okay, any more discussion? Otherwise, uh, we need to move on to second reading.
Motion to waive the second reading.
Second.
Okay, motion second, uh, roll call.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes. Number ten is, um, an ordinance amending Algonah municipal code by removing possibility of imprisonment, second, third readings.
This is, uh, uh, kind of a housekeeping, um, ordinance, uh, the, uh, city code sets for, sets forth its standard, uh, penalties, um, for violating, uh, uh, the code and, uh, the, uh, consequences of municipal infractions. Some of the standard language at the very end includes, including, uh, imprisonment up to thirty days. Um, I believe that was adopted in nineteen eighty-eight. Um, there was a, uh, code, or a, uh, state of Iowa changed the law back in twenty seventeen that, uh, makes cities liable for the, uh, public defend, some of the public defender costs, um, on, if there's a public defender used on a, uh, municipal infraction case, um, if there is the possibility of imprisonment. Um, in talking with our city attorney, you know, on these type of things, aren't, aren't, you know, imprisonment things that we are, are looking to pursue is the standard language. For example, right now, technically, if you're in violation of the airport zoning ordinance, there's the potential for that. Um, so what this does is just strikes, um, that imprisonment language from, um, all, all the code sections, and then I will just note, the only one that might kind of stick out to people is consumption in public places or, or, or public intoxication. Uh, those would be, uh, charged now under state law, so, um, you can still jail, um, on those, um, as needed. Uh, we did consult with PD on this, uh, but this kind of cleans up our language, um, so we're no longer, uh, liable for any of those public defender fees potentially. Uh, and then based on the advice of the city attorney, um, we recommend, uh, approving all three readings and adopting the ordinance, uh, this evening. Paul Boe, anything to add?
No, the, the only thing I would add is I want to put, uh, I want to compliment Barb for, for doing the work on this, okay, because, I mean, there are so many sections that had that imprisonment not to exceed thirty days language in there. Well, Barb, to her credit, took it upon herself to put an ordinance together, and, uh, you know, I reviewed it and made a few, you know, minor language changes and things like that. But again, I want to give credit to Barb for, uh, doing the ninety-eight percent of the work on this, okay, because she, she, you know, she, it was, it was brought to our attention that this was going on, and again, as city attorney, I want you to know that whenever I'm over there and there was a, uh, there was a, uh, city code violation, I told the magistrate, "The city will never ask for, uh, jail time." And so, you know, she, she, she was always very good and clear about, okay, you know, she, I mean, she knew that was the case, but again, with the, with the law changes, uh, Jacob pointed out in two thousand seventeen, and then the state public defender, you know, kind of looked into it and said, "Well, jeepers, your code says that, you know, even the standard penalty, which, you know, it could be anywhere between sixty-five and six hundred and twenty-five dollars for a munis, for a, uh, just a simple misdemeanor charge, um, it says, you know, there could be imprisonment not to exceed thirty days." So, because that's in there, even though we never ever requested it, the magistrate knew we weren't not asking for it, but if, if, um, you know, if they had had a public defender, uh, and the public defender, of course, is going to submit a bill to the state, which they should for the work they do, they went back and, as Ja- Jacob pointed out, it's, you know, it's just been a, a couple of times over the past few years where, you know, the city had to, you know, pay something in, but again, I give Barb credit for taking the bow by the horns and, and putting something together so we could, uh, eliminate that, and, uh, once this is, and that's why we're asking for the second, third readings to be waived tonight, you know, approve the first and then have a second motion to waive the second, third reading, because we want to get this ordinance adopted and published. Once it's published, it's, you know, that's, that's the final task that makes it law, and once that happens, we will be notifying the state public defenders office that, you know, Algonah no longer is, you know, should be getting any small little bills, you know, if there's a, a, a city violation where there's a court-appointed attorney, because if, you know, the magistrate, if, if they, if somebody wants a court-appointed attorney, the magistrate's going to give them one, even if it is a, uh, city case occasionally. Well, um, so, it's just, that's why we're asking that you adopt the first reading and waive the second, third readings tonight, because we want to get this on the books right away so we can notify the state, and, um, and again, I'll also let the magistrate know that what I've been saying for, you know, the past twenty-five years, I mean, you know, we now have an ordinance that, that says the same thing, we're, we're never going to seek any jail time. So, that's, uh, that's why this is being asked by, for the council to do it tonight.
I'll move to waive the first reading.
Second. Motion second, roll call.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Move to approve the first reading.
Second. Motion the second, uh, roll call.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Move to waive the second and third readings.
Second. Okay, roll call.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes. Okay, that's done. Okay, let's move on.
Good job, Barb.
Thank you, Barb.
Thank you.
Every penny counts. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Number eleven, an ordinance amending city code, uh, chapter ten restricting parking on Dodge, McCoy, Phillips, designating a four-way stop at state and all intersections, first reading.
Um, yeah, this, uh, ordinance makes, uh, four changes to chapter ten of the city code, which regulates parking and traffic. Um, the first is at the, um, intersection of Hall and, uh, State Street, um, that right now is like thr, it's a, uh, you know, a full intersection, but there's only stop signs on three of them, um, and that was something when we were looking at the design for that project that, um, we found to be quite odd, um, especially just from a line of sight, um, the one that doesn't stop has the best line of sight. Um, so that was, um, as part of the, uh, design, uh, that the engineers recommended making that a, a four-way, uh, stop sign, uh, stop, um, and that was included in the plans and their signage for that as part of the contract. Uh, so that's the, uh, first change. Uh, the second is repealing, um, the, uh, language allowing for angled parking on Dodge Street, um, which is obviously taken away when that street section was reconstructed in twenty eighteen, so that's just kind of a housekeeping item. Um, and then, um, the, uh, final two changes relate to, uh, parking on the two streets that, um, are under reconstruction. Uh, so on North Philip Street, um, the side on which parallel parking is a lot, is allowed, um, will change to the west side of the street, um, in accordance with the, uh, approved, uh, design plans, and then on McCoy Street, that street, the, um, street width was actually narrowed, and with that, that bought us more space in the right of way for the angled parking on the east side, um, so those line markings don't have to be at such a severe angle, um, so we were able to fit more parking on that side, and it'll be, um, a lot more kind of a natural, um, area, people used to parking to, parking, and in terms of the angle, um, but with that, uh, street width being thirty-one feet, uh, the standards are that with that separation, you shouldn't have, uh, parallel parking across the street, so this eliminates, um, that parallel parking, which only permitted it during certain times when school was in session, uh, to begin with.
Okay, one issue I have with McCoy, I'm just curious, um, if the people living along there on the, on the west side won't have problems, um, at the party, we have people over a foot, football game or something, and there's no place to park? Um, I realize, I think that the angle parking that is, Eric is parking, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
That's not public parking on that side.
So, the, all those, kind of, in that neighborhood, those streets, there's parking on, on either side, um, of those, and if you look at the, um, where the driveways are, I think there's maybe, I mean, maybe eight spots told that you could, you could park anyways on McCoy, um, parallel on that west side. Um, so, and, um, Bolden Bank engineer isn't here tonight, but they're the ones that made this recommendation, um, just based on the new street width, um, they kind of have cars backing out that you don't want them that tight. This is similar when, um, O'More Street, when we changed that last year, again, without thirty-one feet, we got rid of the parallel on the east side of that street.
Okay. Well, this'll take three readings, so if anybody, or, is this, uh?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the first reading?
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess if anybody has issues, I don't live there, so it's not my issue, but if, um, somebody does have issues, I would suggest you contact, uh, either City Hall or one of your council members. Okay, somebody want to move ahead with this?
Move to waive the first reading.
I'll second.
Okay, uh, motion second, roll call.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes. Okay, let's move on to number twelve. Resolution approving plan specifications and awarding, uh, construction contract for the wastewater treatment facility.
Uh, we have, uh, Kevin Graves, an engineer, uh, with WHKS, um, with us this evening to kind of review the project, the bids, and, uh, the recommendation on, uh, moving forward for the council. Kevin?
Thank you, Jerry. So, tonight, yeah, we're, we're looking at the plan specifications for wastewater treatment plant project that we need, uh, secondary well improvements project. Uh, we have several plans, I will not go over these in great detail with you for, uh, for sake of, of time and everything, but, um, the short version of this project is that, that there's two main, uh, parts of it. Uh, the first is that we have the secondary well, um, this area here is effectively about a big open pit at the treatment plant, about fifteen feet deep, and that, uh, collects all the, the wastewater from the primary portion of the project, and then, uh, pumps will pump it from there up to the secondary portion with the current treatment process. Uh, right next to that, where the pumps are, where they reside is, and, you know, a big concrete structure adjacent to it with a concrete slab over the top. So, the two main deficiencies we've identified are that the valves associated with the pumps, some of them are old and inoperable, and, uh, if they were to fail further, there's the potential for those to, to, to cause wastewater to come into that basement area where the pumps are and cause, you know, significant damage. Um, in addition, the, they're on the, on the suction side of the pumps, so, uh, in order to take a pump out of service and get it fixed, um, that valve needs to be able to be shut so that we're not creating a spot where all that wastewater can come to the basement. And with those severely inoperable, it's, uh, causing a headache for Mark and the plant trying to get those pumps repaired. So, that, that's one main, uh, deficiency that was identified. The second one is that the concrete, um, slab adjacent to the wet well is deteriorating pretty, uh, pretty significantly, and if we've got some kind of follows of that area, the slab adjacent to that pit, um, this was originally constructed in, in the mid-eighties, so we're, you know, we're forty-plus years into the life of this area, that wet well and, and the concrete slab and the adjacent building. Um, there has been some repair work over the years as this, this area has experienced deterioration. Uh, it, it's not holding up, it's a kind of tough spot because the, of the freeze thaw that happens in that open area, we've got it kind of sandwiched in between a building and that open pit. So, what we had proposed in this project was to, to remove all that existing top concrete slab, uh, not necessarily the roof of that, of the building underneath, that is a kind of separate concrete structure, but to, to remove that top slab and, and renew that, and kind of redesign it in a way that would help mitigate those freeze thaw issues over time, try to give them a little bit of a better house track for, for that holdup. Uh, because what we're ultimately planning to do for the secondary wet well is repurpose it in your larger project and use it as the, the primary wet well, the main point for all the wastewater to come through, and, and repurpose that downstairs area with newer larger pumps to, to be able to handle that pumping to the oxidation drenches it's constructed. So, the, the, because of those two main deficiencies and the, uh, I guess the time sensitivity we've seen with, especially with the valves, we thought we, we recommended that we do this project ahead of the, the other, uh, larger project that we had in a few years. So, we have, uh, put that together, sent it out to four competitive calls, uh, we sent this out to four contractors, uh, and had received one call back from TJ's Trucking and Excavating from the one in Minnesota, uh, three other contractors that we had sent this call down to and, and solicited them to, to provide a call, uh, where two local contractors, Redding Excavation and Burpling, and this, as well as MJ LeConner, uh, who performed the last treatment plant work at, at the plant for the gas handling system. We did receive one call back from TJ's, uh, the number that they provided was, was significantly higher than what was budgeted in your, in your CIP for this. So, a total bid that came in, the call that came in was two hundred and sixty-three thousand four hundred and sixty-one dollars. With that number, the, you know, in addition to just sending that to us, the staff TJ's contacted us and we talked through some items that we, that they felt would be potentially, um, beneficial, or sculpt changes that could reduce the cost of the work down at the plant. A couple of those to highlight tonight, one is the, the discharge piping and valves on the discharge side of the pumps downstairs. We had those included in the project, not necessarily, uh, from the, the time sensitivity perspective, but more of a, since we're down there, let's change those out as well as they will be done with larger project. The staff TJ's kind of, uh, let us know that the, the installation or the labor involved with that is, uh, looks to be significantly more expensive than that we could now than if we were to wait and, when we change out the pumps later, to the tune of twelve, fifteen thousand dollars. So, uh, that, you know, talking to them, looking at the, the work that would need to be done, and we're recommending that, that portion of the project be, be removed and deferred to your larger project later. Uh, so in the call package, you can see that there's a deduct line for eliminating pump discharge piping, that's a, um, or forty-three thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars. The other work, um, that, that we've discussed with them as far as, you know, potentially changing sculpt and then more changing price, would be that concrete slab work up top. So, in, in talking to our design staff or TJ's and kind of putting everybody's, uh, heads together on this, we've identified that this area could be, um, could be utilized and instead of just putting back a concrete open air concrete slab in between the building and that pit, that we could, uh, change that to be, uh, kind of a less expensive concrete slab repair, but then also have a building installed on there, whether it's now or in the future, to, uh, to help prevent that some of that weathering and freeze thaw cycle that's happening. There's also, we have a chem- chemical feed building identified in our larger project that will need to be done later, and so we, so we look at the, the potential for giving you a better product where that slab is now, and also the need of that chemical feed building, so if we can utilize that space, turn it into the chem- fee storage area for the larger project, then we're, we're kind of giving you a better house track at the end of the day. So, what we are, are recommending to do here this evening would be to, to award the contract to TJ's Trucking and Excavating, but with an contingency to, to revise the sculpt and ultimate price of the project, because we, we understand that two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars is significantly more than what we currently have. Uh, we feel that that number can decrease pretty significantly. What we don't have at this time is that specific, here's the bottom line, because we want to make sure that we're, uh, that we're talking through, thinking through what that building looks like, does that, should that be done now or later, and how that concrete slab can be, um, repaired in a way that will make sense for Mark over the course of the next several years, but also to give you a, a good product and something that's kind of lasting, cost-effective for, for the city.
So, was there any specific reason why first the price went up so much, or the bid was so much higher than what was anticipated, and that we only had one bidder? Everybody else busy or not interested?
I think that's, if you can speak to the, the current lineup where, uh, it's mostly everyone's busy at the time, yes. Um, and I think that's the feedback that we received from the local contractors, um, in other projects outside of, of the city of Algonah, we have, they experienced that as well. Uh, we're currently, you know, working on large expansion in the, in the city of Waverly and contractor, that, you know, the, the recurring theme is we can't get enough guys here to, to get the project done, and it's just a struggle to fill all the crews and, and get that work done, and in the timeframe and, and.
I guess my concern is we're looking forward to a much larger project here in the future, and we don't want to see that kind of increase because of the same thing.
Yes, that, that's very, you know, a federal concern. Um, I think the, the, the attractiveness of the project-
and we don't want to see that kind of increase because of the same thing.
Yes, that, that's very, you know, a federal concern. Um, I think the, the attractiveness of the project tends to, to increase significantly when there would be, you know, on the order of a fifteen thousand dollar project as opposed to a couple of one-thousand dollar project. So, that, that's part of the, kind of part of the struggle is to say, well, we're probably getting, um, less interest on this type of, or this size of a project, and the whole sort of fact that we have a couple of different key interests between the piping work and valves and the concrete work, that tends to promote two different styles of contractors. Um, but, you know, we had, we had identified these as kind of some of the time sensitive things that we didn't want to wait for several years to take care of, so, we kind of came into an understanding that, that that would be a little bit of a struggle.
Kevin, and I know from our conversations on Friday, we discussed, you know, does it make sense to wait and try to rebid this, um, you know, kind of on options there, and yeah, we discussed just kind of the two very distinct types of work in the contract, which aren't necessarily desirable, and then it's just such a, a tight confined space, um, and having to pump and operate, it's just, it's a, it's a, a very inconvenient small project to have to do. Um, so, you know, in terms of, yeah, putting out a price, it's, it's a not necessarily attractive, um, type of work, um, as opposed to, yeah, a larger project.
Right, so the, so, and the answer to, can you wait until spring and, and rebid and try to get more interest? Our, our concern there is we may still receive basically the same, you know, the same level of, of interest.
Have you, have you ever received a bid from TJ's before?
Yep.
On other projects?
Yep, we have worked with TJ's on, on, on multiple projects. Uh, they were actually a subcontractor for the last treatment plant project that you guys did in twenty-ten, so they're, they're familiar with your plant, um, they've installed a lot of the piping and ground that's out there now.
Okay.
They have, uh, we've done, uh, probably four or five projects with them as the general contractor as well.
And possibly similar projects like this, just doing the concrete work?
Yeah, their, their, um, their main, you know, bread and butter, if you will, is pipe installation, uh, valves, and then the work that will be done in the basement of that wet well, as well as, you know, outside of the pit we'll be installing, um, they're, they would likely have a subcontractor that they were team with that would do this concrete work.
Is Paul Schenk their owner, or is he also their engineer too?
He's the owner.
Okay, is there an engineer at TJ's?
I do not believe they have any staff.
Okay.
Kevin, um, what would you project in terms of a timeline of, you know, kind of going back and working through these options and getting a, a firmed-up number on a new, a kind of a, a new version of the scope of work?
Sure, uh, yeah, I mean, clearly, we, um, we wouldn't want to necessarily go too far until we have that revised scope and, and budget number by now that's, you know, acceptable to both sides. Um, I would say that would be, um, you know, on the order of probably several weeks, guessing, so we would be, uh, not your first meeting in October, but likely the, the second meeting in October, that and that kind of came out in the early stages. It's kind of, you give the opportunity.
Um, yeah, kind of the, the reason for asking that question is in the resolution, the way it's written, it just authorizes the mayor to, um, negotiate and execute, um, a, uh, amended agreement, um, but if that's something that, you know, if you want to give us the, you know, accept it, but give us the direction to negotiate, but that actually negotiated scope of work and contract price would, would come back to council for final approval, we can, we can do it that way as well.
Seems like timelines are almost the same either way, but maybe it's faster if the mayor negotiates, but I, doesn't seem like a whole lot.
Well, it, it doesn't sound like, you know, our next meeting on the third, that, you know, we probably wouldn't have any, I mean, maybe, uh, if we could share kind of an update on, on where we're at, you know, where we, you know, updated numbers or, or timeline, but, um, you wouldn't expect to have a, an updated kind of final anyways, but I didn't...
I was hoping we would, but I just didn't want to, just to say, yeah, absolutely, and then, then I'll be a little slower.
I mean, so, what if we can't get to a price that we feel, I mean, then the project just gets put on hold and it's done?
Um, you know, you know...
If we have to come, it sounds like we need to get something done.
Yeah, that, it's, you know, I think both of these items, yeah, they need to be done, um, you know, probably, you know, the valves more urgent, um, just from kind of a catastrophic standpoint, potential. Um, so, it'd be, you know, proceed, uh, you know, this way, negotiate, try to do something and get going yet this fall, and then the project would finish in the spring, or you could reject all of the one bid or quote, um, and then, you know, try to, to time it, you know, and, and maybe, you know, request quotes, and in this case, since they came in so high, um, we might have to then look at doing a, a, a formal sealed bid, um, but, you know, just be delaying the project to then, you know, do a version of the same work later either way.
I think the fallback, if you will, to lifters, uh, you know, as far as coming up, coming up to a, kind of, pretty different number, is the, the slab portion and potential for building over that area is the, kind of, the biggest part that we're still, would need to kind of hide out. Um, you know, we have pretty solid numbers here on the bid for the piping, piping only in the beginning of the wet well, and that does fall within your, with your budgeted area, so, um, so we could, and that, I think that's kind of a fallback to say, if we can't be able to do with that concrete slab building, then we could probably just, um, transition to, hey, let's take care of the piping, get the wet well cleaned out, get that work done, that will, that will take care of the valve issue, and, and then, I guess, come up with a, an acceptable bid for that area with Mark, how to cut hand on that concrete slab until we can have a more perfect decision.
So, do we need an action on this tonight? Um, if there's going to be negotiation, then come back again to us, or?
Um, my, yeah, my recommendation would be that, uh, approve the resolution, approving the plans, um, accepting the bid and warrant the contract, and then as it lays out in there, um, you know, directing, you know, contingent upon, um, a final scope of work and contract amount being negotiated between the city and, and the contractor, um, and whether or not I just want to authorize, you know, the mayor and working city staff to, to make that final determination, or if you'd like to see that come back to council for final approval.
Maybe it wasn't here, but how much more was it than what you guys had estimated?
Uh, if I remember correctly, we were at, so was the...
Subtracting a forty-five thousand out this time, provisions.
Uh, yeah, so that forty-three thousand would, would take that two-sixty down to, basically to forty.
Yeah. I think in six or eight months, I think the environment can be a lot different, but I also don't want to wait on something that's...
Kevin, my question, you know, you're talking about removing the concrete work, right? To get the price down?
Yeah, removing slash, um, and reworking that work.
I mean, I understand our street project works with another engineer. Would we be able to, like, piggyback that on with a street reconstruction project next year, because we've got a lot of contract, you know, concrete going down next year on our street reconstruction? Maybe we could tie that in and get a cheaper bid?
I think one of the, one of the items that was identified by TJ's that ended up saying, you know, it causes more, having to be more expensive was, was that there's several different types of contractors, subcontractors that would likely be involved. It's not only kind of removing the concrete, laying down the new reinforcing steel, pouring the new slab, uh, it's, uh, you know, making some modifications to, to the building itself, changing some gutters about, there's some mechanical work involved, there's a big exhaust stand on the top of the slab.
Okay, so it's not strictly concrete work?
Unfortunately, I'd say probably.
Okay.
Sounds like our valves need to be done, but I, it's just hard to go okay, I don't know, for me, it's just hard without a solid number, but, you know, just hard to, I, we need to do something, but I just wish we had, do some, I guess.
So, you know, the resolution is approved, you know, it is contingent, um, you know, upon that successful negotiation, so we could, you know, approve and move forward with negotiations. If we just don't feel like the, the price of where we're at and the scope is satisfactory, we could just at that point, okay, we didn't meet the contingency, so, you know, the resolution would more or less be, you know, mute at that point. But it's, you know, kind of a, granted, you know, bids were just due last week, so it's taking those, kind of then trying to figure out, okay, what can we maybe do to work this down? It, you know, it's still pretty fresh, and so that's why it's still in process, but, you know, knowing that, okay, there's likely definitely some big things that we could, you know, potentially amend.
Okay, so I guess it comes down to, you know, having the mayor and staff work with them, um, we want to go ahead and, um, trust them to come up with a better plan?
I want to know a little more about it than even I, even though we hear a lot about wastewater and start to learn more and more each time, but, it takes other stuff. Yeah, learn more and more, but I, I give the point at this point, I do trust them to do that, so I think we should mostly approve the resolution.
I'll second.
Okay, motion in second, roll call?
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Working hard. Uh, okay, number thirteen, resolution approving EMS, EMT training agreement.
Uh, this, uh, resolution approves a, a training agreement with Galen Householder. Um, uh, for the agreement, the city will pay the costs, uh, for EMT training course up to two-thousand-ten dollars, um, which will be forgiven if, um, Ms. Householder, uh, works as a volunteer, uh, for Algonia EMS, at least four complete shifts per month for twenty-four months.
Okay, now, this is a fairly standard agreement, isn't it, that we have done this quite a bit in the past?
Yep.
And plan to in the future to upgrade our credentials, working?
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, motion in second, roll call?
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Fifteen, approve pay application two for Millan Overlay.
This approves the pay application to Blacktop Services, uh, for Millan Overlay Street improvements completed in August. Uh, the amount due with this pay application is five-hundred-and-seventy-thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-eight-hundred-and-ten dollars and eighty-seven cents. Uh, the engineer recommends approval.
Now, this has been a project that has seemed like it's taken a long time for Millan Overlay because there's been so much current work also, but...
Yes.
We've had some pretty good streets when it's done. Make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Motion in second, roll call?
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
And seventeen is approve of street closures for Band Day, October first.
Uh, so Band Day will be on Saturday, October first, twenty-twenty-two. Um, I talked with, uh, Vicky at the Chamber, and they're planning to do the same, uh, street closures as they have in, uh, recent years past, so, uh, these are the, uh, proposed closures for the parade, which starts at, uh, one P M. And I will note, we have talked with the, uh, Blacktop Services, the Millan Overlay general contractor, um, and they're aware that, that, uh, those blocks of Jones and Nebraska Street need to be open, um, that day, um, for, uh, traffic.
Motion to approve, street closures?
Second.
Motion in second, roll call?
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
And eighteen is approve of street closures for Band Day, October first.
Uh, so Band Day will be on Saturday, October first, twenty-twenty-two. Um, I talked with, uh, Vicky at the Chamber, and they're planning to do the same, uh, street closures as they have in, uh, recent years past, so, uh, these are the, uh, proposed closures for the parade, which starts at, uh, one P M. And I will note, we have talked with the, uh, Blacktop Services, the Millan Overlay general contractor, um, and they're aware that, that, uh, those blocks of Jones and Nebraska Street need to be open, um, that day, um, for, uh, traffic.
Motion to approve, street closures?
Second.
Motion in second, roll call?
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
And eighteen is approve parade route for Bishop Garrigan's homecoming on September twenty-third.
Uh, so this Friday, uh, will be Bishop Garrigan's homecoming, and, uh, typically they've done a parade downtown down State Street and then done a, uh, pep rally, um, in front of the courthouse, so there'll be a, a slight change in, uh, plan this year with, uh, work going on. Um, they're proposed to still do the staging there, kind of on Nebraska Street, uh, but then go down State, um, and then turn south on Thorington, um, and then, uh, have the pep rally there, um, on the Carnegie lawn. Um, I think the, you know, entire event is probably fifteen, twenty minutes or less, so, uh, right there at the end of the day on Friday.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion in second, roll call?
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Okay.
One thing I just noticed, uh, the building's homecoming is the following week, and they have a parade route as well, and I just realized that's not on here, go through that. Uh, it's going to be the same as before, um, which would be Main and State, they'd go to, uh, go south to Nebraska, or, sorry, south to McGregor, then west to Hale, and then Hale through the school. I just, I, I just noticed that's not on there, and we will not have another city council meeting.
I was told that they changed that last year. I, I don't know?
No.
But it started...
Same route as last year, it was two years ago they changed it.
Two years ago.
Yeah, it was about two years ago.
I, I just saw that and wanted to, I, I, yeah.
Yeah, good thing you brought that up.
Well, I suppose, uh, we'll just have to work with them to accommodate and remind them and ask them that they need to be coordinating those things with us and letting us know.
Okay. Let's, uh, move on to nineteen, set Halloween trick-or-treat hours. Uh, normally, the, I know the past mayor has always wanted to have this on Halloween, and, um, and our normal hours are five-thirty to seven-thirty, so...
Monday, so I think it would work.
Okay.
Unless anybody had a different thought.
I did talk to, uh, Vicky at the Chamber and, uh, Judy SAMP with the Methodist Church, and for now, they're planning to have their events on Monday, the thirty-first, unless we were to change otherwise.
Yeah, and then, there was, yeah, as far as any other events, was there any street closures involved, or, like, the trunk-or-treat or something like that? I didn't know if that was something, uh...
We can have that on the, the next council meeting for, because we still have two before the end of, of October.
Okay, do we want to, uh, have a motion on the Halloween?
I'll make a motion to set the Halloween trick-or-treat hours for October thirty-first from five-thirty to seven-thirty.
Second. Okay, motion in second, roll call?
Brad?
Yes.
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
And twenty is approve advertising for upcoming job openings.
So, let Chief Miller just provide a, kind of a quick overview on some of the personnel planning that we're undergoing.
Yeah, thanks, guys. We'll start with the dispatcher position. We, we did get a letter of resignation for, from Diane Graham, who's been with us for a long time as dispatcher. She has been very great, and she's given us a great deal of time, which is not till the beginning of February. But with that, hiring someone new, it takes time, and training takes time, and like anything else, getting these positions are tough, and we would, our goal is to have someone in place trained by February first, because it's just a lot of work and a lot of extra time and our scheduling to make that work. So, if we could be, we're, with being fortunate enough to get this much time, our goal is to have someone ready when she, when she is officially retired. The second one is patrol officer, Officer John McIswatter is planning to retire in the end of November, so November thirtieth is his official last day. That is another one, it takes a lot of time, we can't really plan, we don't know what, you know, with that one for training, we don't know if we're going to have to send someone to the academy. I have, just in case, I have secured a spot at ILA for January if we have to send someone. I wanted to make sure we were kind of ready to go, just in case. So, that one would just be kind of a, looking at that hiring around when he is stepping down, and it gives, if it's somebody new that we have to send to the academy, it would give us a month in-house with them to get just local stuff, start to learn the streets a little bit, understand a little bit of the stuff before we send them off to the academy. But that's, that's kind of what we're looking at right now.
And these positions, the reason they're, they're coming to council is just, this is with the, mentioned with the retirements, we have this lead time, we'd like to take advantage of it and, you know, hopefully get ahead of the things, and, you know, ideally we'll have some, some overlap, which would, you know, for a temporary time, put us over a number of authorized positions. So, you know, seeking council okay on that. And then the, the posted wage ranges, which would be for the patrol officer, depending if they're certified, not, and then what grade they start out at, but the hourly wage would be twenty-three dollars and twenty-five cents, starting up to twenty-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents per hour. And then on the dispatcher, it would be starting at eighteen-seventy-five per hour, up to twenty-one dollars and fifty cents per hour.
I just have some questions on the postings, just because I don't know. How many hours a week does a dispatcher work on average?
Uh, well, they, their schedule is they work four eight-hour shifts on, then they're off two. So, it's back and forth.
Okay.
That's how it would always be, it's offset. So, at the end of the year, it equals out to the two thousand and eighty. That's, and that's how we look at that. See, on the law enforcement side, it's always, you look at the, and we look at the end of the year for the two thousand and eighty, because just with the way the, the way it works and the, our, the number of employees we have, certain weeks they are going to be higher than the next week where they'll have over hour.
Okay.
Law enforcement is unique in terms of how federal labor law applies, because we can, we look at a thirty-day as opposed to all other positions as a forty-day, or one week if you're over your forty hours, where full-time police and firefighters, you, you can, because of the nature of the hours in the position, you can look at that kind of broader period.
Okay, that's what I was just wondering, what's, and then was DOQ stand for?
Depending on qualifications.
Okay, thanks, I'm just curious. Thanks.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, good luck. That's the next thing.
Okay, do we want to approve this action?
I'll make a motion to approve the advertising of these job openings.
Second.
And roll call.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Twenty-one is the final notification on terms expiring and appointments revolving loan fund committee. Betty Kunkel and Teresa Kellenberger are coming to yend to their terms, and this is a mayor's nomination. Does, does anybody know that the mayor talked to them, or?
I'm aware that he visited both, I believe. Betty is not interested, and we need to find somebody, but Teresa is willing to stay on, so I'd make a motion to approve Teresa for another term with the revolving loan fund.
Second.
Okay, motion in second on Teresa. Roll call.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
And twenty-two is the second notice of vacancy and future appointment for Parks and Recognition, so we need to find somebody for replacing Zhou Dao, who's resigning from the commission.
I have someone in mind, but I wanted to send them more information about the responsibilities of Park and Rec, and I looked on the website, is there like a paragraph? I thought there was like a description somewhere.
Yeah.
Am I mistaken?
We, we do, and it maybe got lost and buried on the website transition. I will send that, or have Joanne send that to you tomorrow.
Okay, great, thank you.
See where those, because we did have descriptions of all of them.
Okay. Website looks good, and probably just.
Yeah.
Go move over or something. Okay.
Okay, Jake, do you have any further capital projects, or do we have those covered?
Um, just kind of wanted to have that on there as a discussion. I have nothing in particular, but with as much as we had going on, just wanted the opportunity, if there was any, any questions or things, we could get into it.
So, on the pickleball court, I know it just kind of looks like netting and the post to be finished, put in, how long is that, I got to hear, before that happens?
Um, so, we're hoping to do a punch list down there tomorrow to kind of go over some of the final items. I know when I was up there in the last week, I think on Thursday, there's still some grading that we wanted to just confirm and probably adjust a little bit on the west side there. So, plan will be, we'll do a punch list, kind of just, you know, identify any known issues, and then if, we should be able to get the court, you know, open before, you know, maybe some of the site restoration is, is done. So, we do want to get those courts open as soon as they're ready, but we were hoping to do punch list Friday or Monday, but just weren't quite there yet. So, you know, expect it to open here sometime later this month.
Um, Paul Street and Moore Street, when Redding's was doing everything for McCoy Street, they were really good about keeping those business owners updated. Are they doing that for those business owners around there?
Oh, the parking lot?
Yeah, the parking lot.
Yes.
Yeah, sorry.
Um, it's just in terms of when we'll expect it to open back up?
Yeah, kind of like what's going on and things like that.
Um, other than encourage them to, to visit the website where they can sign up or see updates, I don't believe there's any additional effort going on with that. I, I do know they're coordinating with, you know, the businesses that have alley access and things like, you know, the dumpsters and stuff to, to make sure those are out. But the substantial completion for the contract on that's October thirty-first. So, you know, it's, some of it really depends on how Phillips Street goes, but everything looks like it should line up fine, and then as we get closer, you know, we'll, we can let people know once we get an updated timeline, what's happened on the Phillips Street project. So, we have our, like on this project, we had our utility coordination back, meetings back in February, so that's when Centrally, Mid-American Energy, MediaCom, basically with anyone other than the city or AMU with something underground, we all get together, go over the construction plans, and just kind of figure out, are there any obstacles? What has to be relocated? How do we do temp service, things like that? Um, you know, and the plans are set to all the utility providers. Well, the plans required Mid-American Energy to move some of their gas mains, and they were just very slow to get on that, and it's caused Redding's to be delayed, because they can't complete their work, so they did skip to the south, and that's what delayed getting started on the parking lot project. There's still, their subcontractor Q three is still working there on Phillips. Hopefully, later this week, Redding's will be able to start doing final grading, starting from the north, but really until all the gas work, works get out of there, they can't. So, there is, depending on how things proceed, you know, neither the contractor or us want this, but, you know, there might be the possibility of closing down both of those east-west intersections for a week, just to allow work to be going on in both, so it doesn't get delayed anymore. That's kind of, you know, the, the least desirable option, but when we had our meeting, saying, you know, I'd rather we, you know, have to experience and share that inconvenience than, you know, unnecessarily delay a project. That's particularly frustrating, because it's, it's not the fault of the contractor, and it's not that notice wasn't given, it was just lack of preparedness on the one utility provider.
Right, so they are kind of hopefully being more responsive now for you got, for the contractors, but are still dragging?
Q three is here until they're done with the gas.
Okay.
They've got, I believe, phase one done, and move now, they're into phase two, the second portion of it in working, but they are onsite until they're done.
Okay.
And as far as the column, Moore Street parking lot, I have not received any complaints or even questions about when it's going to open. We did hold a downtown meeting, sent out, oh, one hundred and fifty, one hundred and seventy-five invitations to this meeting. We got about fifteen or twenty people show up. So, I, we, we've been really cognizant of getting the word out, and Joanne's done a great job of that, and now it's just the updates from Volta Bank.
Okay.
They still planning on doing the two charging stations there?
Yep.
Those two, correct?
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, it's one charging station that'll do two cars.
Yeah, have we heard if anyone else in town's going to put up charging stations? I always think about the Four Corners as being a place for charging stations, too.
I have been told that the Crone's going to have some charging stations eventually.
I know, and we were looking at the site plan for IHOP, that was one of the options in there, and then I, you know, I think one of the auto dealerships at one point, I'd looked at that. You know, we'll just kind of have to, to wait and see how that, that comes along. We do anticipate probably, you know, at the next meeting, we did send a draft resol, or ordinance on the AMU for the electric charging stations, because we will have to have an ordinance on, you know, regulating that parking there, that it's for electric vehicles, but they, they'll, it will be a fee to be charged, and so we've, we shared a, a draft with them, asking for their feedback on how they want to have this kind of set up, but we will need something similar to handicap parking zones that, you know, they're designated for this purpose.
Is it going to see Teets Park Shelter Houses get closed, the sounds of it? Could you just remind me of what, what will be open to the public, or what months that would be open? Is the bathroom going to be open what months and that, that kind of stuff? I guess, or what would be usable and?
Um, so, the, the, the interior portion, similar to Vets Park, that'll be available for rent year-round, and then there's also a restroom in there. And then the restroom, which is accessible from the outside of the building, we haven't discussed with the commission if we might, you know, shut that down in the, in the dead of winter. You know, it is heated, and we do have supplemental heat in there, and we have worked with the contractor, if there's a way we can identify, basically put a, like a, a smart thermometer in there and have that set up, you know, with the Parks and Rec staff's phone. The fear being that if someone accidentally leaves it open, or, you know, decides to, they want to prop that door open and walk away, you know, that's going to make that stuff run nonstop and probably freeze it. So, we probably, if we're going to keep over the dead of winter, we still need to come up with that solution, but the intent would be that it would more or less be open year-round. I know, like, the drinking fountain that is still to be installed, that's frost resistant, but that's something that will need to be winterized and not in use in the, in the cold, cold months.
Yeah, the, the exterior on that looks completely different, so glad to see that finally addressed. We, we're, we're having weekly meetings there until we get that project closed out, and, you know, they're optimistic they're going to be able to hit that October first, or early, early October for being done, done.
Are they doing inside work there to be at?
Yeah, really on the inside, there's still a number of blocks that we'd identified as having concerns with that they're addressing, and there's a few items on the floor that need to be patched or repaired. But the real, the real critical piece was getting the exterior stained, just from a, in terms of the need to get the out-of-state contractor to come in and do that, and then, you know, before the weather got bad, so it's a big relief that that's taken care of, and the other items should be pretty straightforward.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thanks for the updates.